Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the order. The Town Council meeting for May 14th. Will you all rise for the pledge of allegiance? Jacob, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you will stay standing, please. I would like to just go a moment of silence. A great friend to the community, Francis LaHern, passed away the other day, and there's countless things he's done for so many people within Farmington and throughout Connecticut, so I just wanted to offer a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you very much. And Keith, we'll start off with you. Don't go too far, Jacob.
Jacob, why don't you come right back?
All right, this is your proclamation, Jacob. Whereas the Scouts BSA helps train the youth of our community with skills which serve them well in the future, and whereas many of our youth participate in activities, in the activities of Scouts BSA which benefit our community, and whereas one of the crowning achievements of scouting is the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Jacob McClure from Scouts BSA Troop 170 completed the requirements for Eagle Scout, and whereas Jacob McClure dedicated his Eagle Scout project to managing and to the managing and planning of the horticultural improvement of the First Church of Christ located in Farmington, and whereas Jacob McClure researched requirements needed to complete the project and contacted Call Before You Dig before the work commenced, and whereas Jacob McClure met with Tim Barth and Malcolm McDonald of the First Church of Christ to determine the horticultural, horticult- horticultural, I don't want to ruin your proclamation here, needs of the church, and whereas Jacob McClure identified the side yard and stone patio in great need of improvement, and whereas Jacob McClure cleared brush, removed branches, planted perennials, weeded and mulch-planted areas, Jacob also removed a chain-link fence, painted benches, reseeded grass, and moved stones to enhance the beauty of the stone patio, and whereas Jacob McClure's project was twofold. This project was completed to beautify the church grounds for others to enjoy, and by doing so, Jacob's efforts embodied the vision, mission, and values of the First Church of Christ. Now, therefore, be resolved that on behalf of the Farmington Town Council, we hereby extend Jacob our best wishes and hereby proclaim May 15th, 2024, as Jacob McClure Day in Farmington, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this the 14th day of May, 2024. Joe Capitafaro, Town Council Chair. Congratulations. You want to get up quick picture?
Don't go too far. Stay up there.
Can we do one more?
Do one more, and you got Representative D'Amico. All right, here's our state rep, Mike D'Amico, here for you, too. If you want to give those two things to your parents, so you have an empty hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Jacob, you are one of the few to have a day named after him in Farmington, so that's pretty cool. So congratulations just for that. But the reason we're doing it is because of your achievements and your elevation to the rank of Eagle Scout. So without further ado, from the State of Connecticut General Assembly, an official citation introduced by Representative D'Amico, Representative Cooley, Senator Slapp, and Senator Lopes, be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Jacob McClure in recognition of your elevation to the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement in scouting. You can be proud of the good work that you have done for your community, which will benefit from your dedication and your perseverance. The personal qualities that have enabled you to reach this goal will serve you well in your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. And it's given on the 14th day of May, 2024, at the State Capitol in Hartford, and it's signed by the President of the State Senate, Martin Looney, the Speaker of the House, Matt Ritter, and the Secretary of the State, Stephanie Thomas. Congratulations, Jacob.
Good evening, all. Thank you for coming. Today we mark Childhood Appraxia of Speech Day, and I have a proclamation to share. Whereas, May 14th marks Childhood Appraxia of Speech Day, during which awareness will be raised throughout Connecticut about childhood apraxia of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder that affects one in 1,000 children, and whereas children, apraxia of speech, or known as CAS, causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech defects in children, and whereas the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children, those with apraxia require early appropriate and intensive speech therapy, often for many years, to learn to speak, and whereas without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with apraxia will have diminished communication skills, but are also placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. And whereas that such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities and challenge the ability to become productive, contributing citizens if not resolved or improved, and whereas public awareness about childhood apraxia of speech in Connecticut is essential for families of children with this neurological disorder and the professions, the professionals who support them to achieve the needed services for those learning to use their own voice, and whereas our highest respect goes to these children as well as their families for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles. And let it be resolved that May 14th is Apraxia Awareness Day, and citizens of Connecticut and surroundings are encouraged to work within their communities to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apraxia of speech, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 14th day of May, 2024. Signed, Joe Capitafaro, Chair, Farmington Town Council. Thank you for your attention and your awareness. Have a great afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. That ends our presentation and recognitions. If you guys are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you can adjourn if you wish.
We've got some good stuff coming up. Don't want to miss it.
We have no public hearings and no new items, correct?
Correct.
All right. We'll move to public comment. So if you are seated inside here, please come on up to the podium, state your name. You have five minutes.
I know I get the hook after five minutes.
You're starting it now.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dean Delatch, 29, Basswood Road. Every year since 2016, cities and towns across Connecticut have, excuse me, have declared June 2nd, or the first Friday in June, Gun Violence Awareness Day, joining advocates across the nation who wear orange to honor victims and expand the grassroots movement to end gun violence in America. You may not know, but last week Governor Lamont issued a statewide proclamation declaring June 2nd, 2024 Gun Violence Awareness Day in the state of Connecticut. My first ask of the Town Council is to join other towns across Connecticut and the nation by issuing a proclamation declaring June 2nd Gun Violence Awareness Day in Farmington. Joe told me right before this meeting that you guys are going to address that at the next Town Council meeting, so that's great. Appreciate that. Thank you. But I have more. Also, last week Superintendent of Schools Kathleen Greider and Farmington Police Chief Colin Ryan issued a joint letter to parents of Farmington students asking for their awareness and support in keeping the community safe by promoting safe storage of firearms. Even if a person doesn't own firearms, the letter asks parents to be sure their child doesn't encounter one at the home of a friend or relative. The letter suggests always ask, is there a gun in the home, and if so, how is it secured? My second ask of the Council is to help spread this message to all residents of Farmington. And finally, just today, in case you didn't see it, there was a front-page story in the Hartford Current with the headline, "Suicides Among Older Men Rise." In the state, 18 over age 60 have taken their lives with guns in 2024. Think about that, we're only through four months of the year. Isolation, depression, loss of a spouse, a feeling of a loss of control of their lives are all cited as major contributors. The article goes on to state that these factors combined with many older men owning guns because they served in the military or were police officers make death by suicide with firearm an easier choice. The article goes on to identify a number of things that can be done to address this issue, but there is one thing I'd like to ask of the Council. Connecticut's Risk Protection Order offers a legal process to temporarily remove access to firearms from someone who is deemed to be at immediate risk of suicide and who has access to firearms. So this is a brochure, one of the brochures, about Connecticut's Risk Protection Order, and they are currently located throughout town, at the police station, the senior center, the library, and here at Town Hall. But still, many people are unaware of this process, and like many things, it is only as effective as the awareness of it. So my third ask today is for the Council to consider ways to better inform town residents of the Risk Protection Order process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to make public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After that sobering presentation, hopefully this will be a little more high-spirited, I hope. So my name is Mike D'Amico. I live at 6 Debra Lane, State Representative for the 21st District. I just wanted to give you a brief, and I mean brief, description of a couple of things that happened in the last couple of days of the legislative session that I'm sure you would all be interested to hear. It had, both of these things have to do with Farmington, and normally the last couple of days of the session are dangerous, and people get scared, but in this case, it turned out pretty well for Farmington, and here is why. So there were two bills in front of the legislature the last couple of days of the session. It was House Bill 5523 and House Bill 5524. 5523 was the distribution of ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan Act. There were several million dollars that came to the state of Connecticut in ARPA funds, and many towns made requests as to how that money should be distributed, and the town manager was good enough to make several requests that I and other members of the Farmington delegation put in as a request, and I'm happy to report that every single one of those appropriations was approved by my colleagues in the legislature. So in Farmington, the Westwoods Pickleball Courts are going to get an appropriation of $200,000, which will allow us, I believe, to add extra pickleball courts. The Westwoods Recreation Clubhouse improvements are going to be appropriated, has been appropriated, $100,000, which was the request. The Farmington Dial-A-Ride, $85,000 for a new bus, which is fantastic for our seniors and everyone. The Town Hall Council Chambers, right here in this room, audiovisual improvements, the request was for $25,000, and the appropriation was for $25,000. And Highway and Grounds, a request for $20,000 to defray the expenses or to hire seasonal workers, $20,000 was approved. So everything that we requested, we received. And as my dad used to say, if you don't ask, you don't get. So I'm glad that you asked, Kathy, and we got. So second thing, in House Bill 5524, had to do with bonding and school construction projects. So the issue arose that there might be a problem with part of the reimbursement money that comes back to Farmington for the new Farmington High School. So there was some question about, I believe it was $6 million that might not qualify for the 30% reimbursement. So again, alerted by Kathy's office, and my fellow legislators from Farmington, and I put in the request. So in Section 204 of this bill, it says specifically that the appropriation, the reimbursement will be reimbursed, as it should be, and so the $6 million, 30% of that is about $1.8 million, if I'm doing my math correctly, and it says right here in the bill that Farmington will get the $1.8 million. $1.8 million, yes, correct. So the point of all this is that we made out pretty well, regardless of how you feel about what the legislature did this year, in the last two days, we did some good things for Farmington, and when I got up here in February and with my colleagues and said, whatever you need, just ask us and we will try, thank you for taking us up on it, we tried and we succeeded, and Farmington benefits as a result. I will be quiet now, and thank you for your attention.
Well, thank you to yourself, thank you to yourself, the colleagues for all your hard work, and thank you, Kathy, for getting in touch with everybody, staying on top of it, and getting that done for us. And obviously you cut her town manager's report in half now, so thank you. Anybody else like to make public comment? Anybody online?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right, we'll give them one more second. Anybody online wants to make public comment, please raise your hand. All right, we'll move on. H, we have no readings of communications or appeals. I'm sorry. G, reading of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 1st, 2024 regular Town Council meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll go on to it. H, reading of communications and written appeals, we have none. So we go to Report of Committees, 1928 Building Committee. We had our meeting today. Everything is looking on schedule for us. We're coming in just slightly under budget right now, but still things need to go out to bid, but we are moving along right as planned and working cohesively with the high school building committee. Now we'll move the report on to the Farmington High School Building Committee.
I'll just report that we have our next meeting tomorrow. We're going to do a tour of the high school building. I think some of you will be joining us for that, so it will be a good time to see the progress. Look forward to that.
And what time is that?
5:00 PM.
5:00 PM.
At the trailer, right, at the trailer? Yep.
Excellent. Hope you guys.
Wear appropriate shoes.
No high heels?
Yeah.
All right. Report of the Chair, Jay. All right, it's that time of year, as we see everyone starting to plant their gardens. We are lucky here in town not only to have one place to shop for plants, but we have several. So as you go out shopping, please stop by one of your farm stands instead of a big-box store and support your local farmers in purchasing your summer garden plants. On Saturday, May 18th, the Services of the Elderly will have their vintage fashion show, luncheon fundraiser at St. Patrick's Church from 11:30 to 2:00 PM, $60 per person. And I heard we have a surprise model. Do you know of anybody? Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome. You've got to get the attendance up there, you know? Spur it on.
My outfit's a 1970s outfit.
Perfect. On May 25th, from 5:30 to 8:30 PM, the Farmington Community Service will have a private screening of The Ring in the Mountain. This story is from our own Abby Wadsworth, who will share her story and documentary she created, where she memorialized an incredible event that led her to discovery of the last family member while foraging new family. The event will be held at the Farmington Senior Center. Door is open at 4:30 PM. Cost is $20. Proceeds will benefit the veterans of Farmington, the food pantry, and the Short Stop 24 Foundation. In June, on the 6th, Irving Robbins Middle School, 8th grade promotional will be held, we're starting their graduation season, and then the next day, June 7th, the Farmington High School Class of 2024 graduation will occur. After that, construction and demolition will be occurring at the high school, so access will be limited to outside people. Contractors and employees would be allowed on the site. So if you're planning on going up to the high school after school closes, you might find it blocked off and you won't be able to gain entry to the area. On June 13th starts our summer concert series. The event will be held at New Horizons for this one. The remaining concerts will be held here on Monteith Drive. We have a great variety of bands for the year, of the year, for everybody to enjoy. You go to the town's website to see who's playing on which day. And last, the summer flower baskets will be installed in time for the Memorial Day Parade. This project is funded every year by the residents and businesses of Farmington. Sponsorship levels can be found at the town website. And we'll move on to the Board of Education Liaison.
Thanks, Joe. The Board of Ed met last night. There were multiple recognitions, but in particular, two IAR students, Lily Angle and Jason J.J. Farkas, received the Connecticut Association of Schools Middle Level Scholar Leader recognitions, and Sally Chaves, a kindergarten teacher at West District, also received the 2024 Connecticut Science Teacher Association Excellence in Science Teaching for Elementary School. So it's a statewide award that she earned. There were two presentations. One was, well, there were multiple presentations, two in particular. One is the Educator Diversity Plan and how the, how the district is looking to expand the diversity of its staff. And then the other, which I know has a lot of people concerned or who are interested in, is the Elementary Ad-Hoc Committee. Recommendations were proposed to the Board of Ed last night. The proposal is specifically for Scenario 3, Option 1, and while there's more details available on the website, the gist of it is moving certain neighborhoods from East Farms to Noah Wallace. There's a new development going up in Farmington Ave, future residents in that, so future students, not current students, for that development will be shifted to Union School instead of East Farms. And the pre-K that's currently at Noah Wallace will be moved, is proposed to be moved to West Woods in order to free up the classroom space at Noah Wallace. There will be capital costs associated with that to fit out West Woods for preschool, preschoolers. It would be implemented for the school year '25, '26, but the board is not, has not voted on it yet. They'll be voting on the June 3 meeting, so plenty of time for if anyone wants to make comment or has concerns about it, they can go to the Board of Ed and make those comments. The Farmington High School Senior Award Ceremony is next Tuesday, and the next Board of Ed meeting will be June 3 at FHS.
Thank you very much. Inland Wetlands.
Inland Wetlands met on May 1st. They're meeting again tomorrow, right? Yep, the 15th, at 7:00 PM. The Inland Wetlands, they've been busy. There have been multiple applications for projects that are in the wetlands, the buffer areas, whether it's a dredging project or to construct or expand a garage, things along those lines. There's at least one cease and desist order that's been issued against a property owner, but there's nothing extraordinary. It's the routine approvals that's going on. And the Conservation Commission did report on the household hazardous waste. That was eight hun, they saw 802 vehicles collected over 20,000 pounds of hazardous waste and over 9,000 pounds of shredding, and I can affirm that 9,000 pounds of shredded was reached very early.
I heard that also.
Because around 9:00 or 9:30, my husband was told, "Sorry, we don't have any room left." And that's all.
Well, thank you very much. It was a very successful drive. EDC.
Yes, the last meeting was on May 8th, and the next meeting will be June 26th. They talked about the upcoming business breakfast, the quarterly breakfast, which is going to be Wednesday, June 5th, and the keynote speaker is going to be Mr. Sean Scanlon, who is the Connecticut State Comptroller. He'll be speaking at that breakfast. We also, just tonight, had a meeting that was held at the library for emerging entrepreneurship, keeping the doors open. We had three businesses come and speak to the audience about how they've been, all the challenges that they've had keeping their doors and customers coming in, and that was well attained tonight. And that's it for EDC.
Thank you very much. TPZ, thank you.
I figured Joe wanted to move the meeting along.
See what happens if you don't wear your glasses?
That's right. So the town planning and zoning, they met last Monday, which was May 6th. Their next meeting is May 20th. I think I've talked, you know, in prior updates where, you know, there's some trends. Obviously, I talked about a trend where people were kind of doing home businesses and getting their, you know, special, special permission to do that under certain, you know, guidelines. One of the next things, I think, that's a trend that's starting to emerge is that, obviously, the TPZ, like any, like any governing body that's handling land use issues, you know, we, there's, it's an expensive place to live, housing, right? And so they paused just recently, you know, a year or so ago, to really kind of rethink this, and that's where their accessory dwelling unit language kind of came forward. And so you're beginning to see that. You're beginning to see homeowners basically begin to pursue the ADUs, you know, and repurposing or purposing, you know, outbuildings that they have to do that. So I think that's a trend that you're going to see more and more of, just, I think the market's going to definitely, I think people are, you know, adjusting to the market as far as bringing their parents closer or whatever it might be, you know what I mean, as far as where they, where they need to be. So, so I think that's a trend. I think the, I think, I think the other item is, you know, you know, it's a town that is attractive to develop in, if you can get the right piece, and, you know, there's always people that are exploring with staff different things and repurposing, you know, buildings that we have out there, pieces of land. So, you know, they've been busy. They have full agendas, and staff's been, staff's been good to, you know, as far as where they are in the reviews and the reporting to the commission for their actions.
Excellent.
Yep.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to K. Report of the Town Manager.
Thanks, Joe. As Mike, thank you so much, and thanks Senator Slapp, too. I thought that maybe I'd just give a little bit more detail to some of the things that we were really excited about. So our first priority was the Dial-A-Ride bus, and so we, it was for $85,000, and we did, do need, it was cut out of the budget, and so we do now are getting a new Dial-A-Ride bus, so we're really excited about that. The pickleball courts, which is great, we are able to put in an additional four pickleball courts, and one of the things that we did hear about a little bit is that when we only had four, that we, people said that that wasn't going to be enough, and when we did the bid specs, we actually specked it out so it was easy to put in an extra four pickleball courts. So we were able to, we're out there now, and we just continue to get ready to do that. So it's four more pickleball courts. And then going with that, we had some money, I think about $40,000, to do a mini facelift and to fix up the back deck or patio at the restaurant at West Woods. If you've been there lately, it really needs to be redone. But we asked for an extra $100,000 to give it a true facelift, the restaurant, the outside. Also, one of the things that we're really kind of interested in is with the restaurant, as you know, we're going to have the Splash Park there, potentially having, I know that there is a kind of an outside window, but having like a window that maybe some ice cream and things like that for the kids at the Splash Park. So this will enable us to really try to really upgrade that whole facility. So we're, that's for $100,000. Town Hall Council Chambers, as Mike said, $25,000. This screen right over there, that's terrible. One of the things that we're looking to upgrade that, as you know, when we do move into the 1928 building, this room was still going to be used as the council chambers, so $25,000 for that, that was taken out of this year's budget. And lastly, which doesn't seem like a lot... And lastly, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it means a lot to us, is our part-time seasonal help that was in the highway and grounds department, something that really makes a difference about keeping the trails clean and things of that, to quality of life. So that's $20,000 for that. So when Senator Slapp called, we did, last year we were asked to, and I think there's a little bit more money available this year, but we got something last year, but we felt maybe we didn't ask for enough. So this time we bumped it up. So we're excited that we did, and thank you so much. It's really, it's going to make a big difference.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the seasonal worker, the additional 20,000, so that's an additional person on top of what we already added into the budget for replacement.
Yep, exactly.
So does that effectively mean we have two new people?
I think it's, how do, it's going to be more than that, right?
I think it was going to be more than that. At least two, and then you're picking up another one, right?
Right.
Probably be able to get two to three, you know, two to four.
Yeah, that's great.
Depending on the hours and when they come up.
We're actually probably going to be back to like what we usually do.
That puts us back to where we were 2022 because we came way back 2023, so we were just.
Exactly. Yep, so that, that was good. And we have that, and we also have the CSOs that we're doing. Those are the police people, so we have those, which we put in some money into that. So it's really, it's great. So we're really excited about that. You have the written report, Memorial Day Parade. We're starting at 9:30 AM on New Britton Avenue near the Edwards. So step off. I think we've ordered our shirts, and we'll get them all to you before Memorial Day. We're having a Juneteenth celebration with, where the Free Community Event is hosted by five Farmington Valley towns of Avon, Canton, Farmington, Granby, Granby and Simsbury. And that's June 15th at the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center at 1:00 PM. And lastly, we mentioned it already, we had a great Farmington cleanup day. So the cleanup day went really well with the hazardous waste and also with the shredding. And I think one of the things with the shredding was is that one of the machines that was supposed to come broke down, too. And so that's why. But it would have gone quickly anyway, but it went quickly-er, so.
Quickly-er.
Quickly-er. Good grammar. And that's it.
All right. Thank you for all your hard work. Keith, I get a motion, please.
May I have a motion to accept the Town Manager's report?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Appointments, L1.
Okay. Thank you. That Keith Vivert be appointed as liaison to the Housing Authority.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item L9, I make a motion that Michael Bernabucci be appointed to the Retirement Board for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and ending January 2026.
Second.
All right. And Michael is a town employee for the town highway.
And that's who, they get to pick their member.
Yep. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Down to N1, right?
Nope.
Sorry.
I think we still have a couple, right?
Yeah. Do you want to do all 13? Do you want me to?
You can do later.
I'm going to do that, yeah.
I'll make the motion that Halloran and Sage be appointed as Corporation Counsel for the period May 14, 2024 through December 31, 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So the legal sub, the Legal Services Subcommittee had two days of meetings where we interviewed a number of different firms that had asked, that had responded to the RFP for town, to be town attorney. There were only two firms that had responded to the RFP on the town, for town attorney specifically. And of the two, Halloran and Sage, who's been the town's Corporation Counsel for several years, was definitely the more qualified of the two. And we had a good interview, good meeting with them. And as noted here, the Subcommittee unanimously recommended the reappointment of Halloran and Sage and Duncan Forsyth as Assistant Corporation Counsel, but that's a separate motion.
All right. Any questions based on that one motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
L14, that Duncan Forsyth be appointed as Assistant Corporation Counsel for the period May 14, 2024 through December 31, 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Want to give anything further, or that's basically, describes it all?
Yes.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item L15, I move that Pullman and Conley be appointed as Bond Counsel for the period May 14, 2024 through December 31, 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Anything to fill in?
Pullman and Conley has been Bond Counsel for the last three years. The attorney that is, has been representing us at Pullman and Conley was formerly at Day Pitney. So it's the same attorney for many years, just he's changed firms. We had a great conversation with him. He's, Pullman and Conley was by far the most reasonably, fees, their fees were the most reasonable. The fees are based on the value of the bond as opposed to hourly rates, which as attorneys can be run high quickly. And I know, and we know that Kathy and Joe have been very satisfied with their work and appreciated it. So as a result, the Ad-Hoc Committee unanimously recommends the Town Council reappoint, reappoint Pullman and Conley as Bond Counsel.
Excellent. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item L16, I move that Metzger, Lazaric and Plum be appointed as Labor Counsel for the period May 14, 2024 through December 31, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. You guys had a lot of work.
Yes. So there, this was actually, I think, of all of the different attorneys that we were looking for, I think we had the most applications for Labor Counsel. We did interview two of the firms. Metzger has been the town's Labor Counsel since 2012. They're very competent. We met, is her first name Lisa?
Elisa.
Yeah, we met with Lisa Metzger. And she's, on top of everything, her, their, the fees were very reasonable and probably the lowest as compared to everyone else's. And she's, as I understand, very responsive. So again, we unanimously recommend that the Town Council reappoint Metzger, Lazaric and Plum as Labor Counsel.
Excellent. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
One more.
One more. Jeez, you guys were really going at it.
Agenda item L17. I move that the firm of Updike, Kelly and Spelacy be appointed as Land Use Environmental Counsel for the period May 14, 2024 through December 31, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Updike has been the Land Use Environmental Counsel since January 2004. We, again, interviewed two firms for land use and environmental counsel. And Updike was by, was very responsive to questions and comments and suggestions we had about continued representation. And the, the interview went very well. And as a result, we unanimously recommend that Town Council reappoint Updike, Kelly and Spelacy as Land Use Environmental Counsel.
Excellent. I see we have them since 2004.
Yeah, I was going to say, sorry, Patty, that's, that's an error on my part. It's not since Jan, it's 2020.
That's what I thought, but then I decided.
Yeah, I just read that, I was like, that's not right. Yeah, so it's 2020. Thank you.
All right. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. M, old business? None. Agenda item N1, please.
I make a motion that property tax rate of 25.45 mils be levied on the net taxable grant list of October 1, 2023 in the amount of $4,508,596,898 to meet the appropriations of the Town of Farmington for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. And that such taxes be payable in equal installments on July 1, 2024 and January 1, 2025, except that, except that property taxes as defined in Section 12-141 in the Connecticut General Statutes, in the amount not in excess of $100 shall be due and payable in a single payment on July 1, 2024, et cetera. Is that okay? Or do we need to go through? Okay.
Amy? Got a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
So this is after the budget? You're setting the property tax rate? You're collecting taxes and you're setting the solid waste service charge?
Excellent. Any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right. Agenda item, Agenda item N2, to approve the purchase of property owned by WD2 LLC located at 9300 and 9307 Glen Hollow Drive for a total purchase price of $600,000, subject to the receipt of an acceptable Phase One Environmental Site Assessment Report and subject to due diligence, including but not limited to title search and authorization, and to authorization, the Town Manager to sign a purchase agreement for this acquisition and to authorize, I'm sorry. I'm, this is tough. That 4 billion number really got me. But anyway, we got a few more to go, so I'll get there.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Kathy?
So this is the Glen Hollow piece of property we've been talking about, and this is to authorize me to basically purchase the property on behalf of the town, based on some due diligence that we're going to do.
Great. Any questions?
Kathy, the Phase One that's being done, is that as part of standard due diligence or are there actual environmental concerns with the property?
It's just standard. Yeah.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N3, I make a motion that the firm of PKF O'Connor Davies LLP of Weathersfield, Connecticut be appointed as the town's independent auditor for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Kathy?
So we ended our five-year obligation with our auditors, and we would like to, I'm recommending that we reappoint them for one more year if we want to go out to bid after that. We could do so, but we're kind of off-season right now for, to do that. We've had these auditors for five years. There's very few auditors that do municipal auditing, and I think we talked about this five years ago, is that it takes quite a bit of time to get auditors up to speed. It's one, it takes their a lot of time, and it takes the staff a lot of time to do that. And it is, I think, good to go out for bid every so often, but I think at this point we're just getting used to our new auditors after five years. And so I would definitely say at least recommend them for one more year, and we can have another discussion at another time whether we want to go out for bid for them. That would be my recommendation.
If I may, Joe?
Yes.
I was on the Subcommittee that selected PKF O'Connor Davies LLP, and I can affirm everything Kathy said, that there aren't very many. I remember we had very limited options. I also propose, was a proponent for going out five years ago because the prior, we'd had the prior auditor 20-plus years, I think.
Even longer than that, yeah.
And it, it wasn't, we wanted to avoid them being too comfortable with the town and not calling out any issues they saw. But I think to, for all the reasons Kathy pointed out, it makes sense to keep them for at least another year.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I think the one-year extension makes sense.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N4, to award bid number 339 Tree Removal and Pruning Services to Distinctive Gardens and Tree Care of South Windsor, Connecticut, in accordance with the schedule of costs as listed on the attached spreadsheet.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Kathy?
So this is our tree service, and they are the low bid, and we are, been very pleased with them.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'm going to step out for the next two.
Yes. Keith is going to recuse himself for items five and six. Amy, when you exit the room, you can start. Okay.
Agenda item N5, to award, I make a motion to award bid number 340 Maintenance and Repair of Police Vehicles to Farmington Motorsports of Farmington, Connecticut, in accordance with their bid proposed dated April 18, 2024.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Kathy?
This is a contract to provide maintenance and repair services for all police vehicles. The award would be for a year, starting on July 1, 2024, with the option to extend the contract for an additional year. We could, we have the right to terminate if we feel that there's lack of funding or unsatisfactory performance. Farmington Motorsports has been serving the town police vehicles for many years. They're local and they provide reliable service and have been very accommodating to the needs of the police department. So I would recommend, the estimate value is $50,000. Therefore, it requires you to approve it. And even though we did not get any other bids, I think that we should still continue with Farmington Motorsports.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N6, I make a motion to award bid number 341 Large Fire Apparatus Maintenance to Farmington Motorsports of Farmington, Connecticut, in accordance with their bid submission dated April 23, 2024.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Kathy?
This motion is to contract with the vendor to provide maintenance repair services for all our large fire apparatus in the fire department. Apparatus to be serviced under this award would include engine pumpers and the aerial ladder truck. Fire staff has reviewed this bid and has recommended awarding it the contract to Farmington Motorsports. Farmington Motorsports is the second lowest bid, based on three bids. However, after the review of the bids, the fire chiefs and the Director of Fire and Rescue Services have recommended the award be made to Farmington Motorsports for the following reasons. Farmington Motorsports is a Farmington company with facilities located in town and with several members of the businesses serving as volunteer firefighters. Since they are a local company with facilities in Farmington, the apparatus will be out of service less because the apparatus will not have to leave town for repairs and maintenance. And as you remember what we talked about in the budget time, we are having some problems with some of our trucks. And this is going to be, I think, will make up the difference in the cost that we're not taking these trucks out of service into other places out of town. Farmington Motorsports has the capability of doing large apparatus towing, so the service does not have to be subcontracted, which is another benefit. And Farmington Motorsports currently has the contract to maintain and repair the fire department, small vehicles. So now they would be doing the large vehicles, and they have the capability, and we always get very good service for them. So I would recommend Farmington Motorsports.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Catherine, can you ask Mr. Vivert to come back in, please? Did you clear your head after the billions and billions of dollars?
I pulled that tension back on me. I thought I had a good way to break away from everything that had happened. It was a great spot for a recusal. N7, I make a motion that Section 55-1 of the Town Code of Ordinances be waived and that Tanco Street Lighting, Inc. of San Francisco, California, be granted a contract extension to provide streetlight maintenance, maintenance services for the period of May 2024 to May 15, 2027, at an estimated annual cost of $35,000 per year.
Second.
Motion and a second. Kathy?
So some of you may remember, but during 2017, the town purchased the streetlights So some of you may remember, but during 2017, the town purchased the streetlights throughout town that were owned by Eversource, and that was a really great thing that we did. It was, took a ton of work, but we were able to do it. But after requiring the streetlights, the town entered a contract with Tenko to convert the streetlights from high-pressure sodium fixtures to LED. Once the conversion was complete, Tenko retained, was retained on a three-year contract to maintain the streetlights and repair worn-out and broken fixtures as required. The maintenance service contract was extended when it expired in 2021 for an additional three period, three-year period until April 2024. Recently, staff had discussions with representatives from Tenko about extending the contract for an additional three years until May 2027. Under the contract extensions, the town would pay Tenko $1 per fixture per month, approximately $1,744 per month for auditor, audit and monitoring services, and would pay for time and materials based on any repair and replacement work based on the attached hourly schedule. Using recent experience, staff experience estimates, this would be about $15,000 per year. Overall, the change to the hourly rate equals a 3% increase in the first year and 2% increase for year three. There would not be an increase in the hourly rate in year two. We have been really pleased with their service, and we are recommending that we continue with them for the next three years.
Any questions?
My only question is, and I think it's, you know, I, I don't have a problem with the numbers. I was just wondering, does Tenko have other contracts in the area?
I think they do, yes.
Right. Like, in, in, basically, they cover Connecticut, and they have it pretty well buttoned up. Okay.
I have a question. I see that the pricing excludes prevailing wage. Are we, I, I don't know enough about prevailing wage, other than that there's often requirements to pay prevailing wage, but.
It's way below prevailing wage. It's also repair maintenance, it's not new construction.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N8, to award a contract to Tilcon, Connecticut, Inc. to supply in-place bituminous.
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 Material.
Material on town roads for the 2024 paving season at a cost not to exceed $950,000.
Second.
Motion is second. Kathy?
This is to contract with the vendor to supply bituminous materials in place for the town's 2024 street paving programs. Fund for this work in the amount of $3.5 million were made available in the capital budget. The amount of 950 is an estimate for the amount of paving work that will be undertaken during this year's paving season. The contract award would be under the terms of the state contract, and it's for Tilcon.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item N9, to approve the transfer of uncollectible property taxes to the suspense tax book.
Second.
Motion is second.
In accordance with section 12-165 of the Connecticut State Statute, the town, the tax collector has recommended the 2024 suspense tax book. This book has been compiled for the purposes of identifying sums that may be uncollectible and, but in no way represents a cancellation of the tax. The tax office will continue to exercise every possible avenue to collect the unpaid tax. Those who own motor vehicles cannot register a vehicle in the state of Connecticut until the tax is paid. The sum is $35,455. We do have a big suspense, suspense book. If you're interested in it, I'd be happy to provide you a copy. But as you know, we, our tax collector here, we're very good at collecting taxes here in Farmington. So $35,000 for a suspense book is not a bad number.
Any questions?
Actually, I do have one quick one, because I'm just curious, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask you earlier, but we talked about selling some outstanding taxes. Does that come into play here? You said we didn't need to do it. I didn't know if we were going to do it.
Did we, Joe, did we do that?
Yes, back in February, we completed a sale of tax liens that the council approved. Those were basically liens on real estate. And what you're suspending tonight is basically personal property, primarily motor vehicles.
Oh, okay.
They're not legal. We don't, we don't leave those. But we did leave the property, sold the liens on properties back in February. We got about $40,000, I think it was $40,000.
No, I think it was.
About $89,000.
Surprise, I even thought it was higher than that. But you're, you, no matter.
But I, I gave it exactly.
All right, no, I was just curious if that came into play here, but it doesn't, so thank you, I was just curious.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
N10, I make a motion to approve the listed property tax refunds.
Second.
Motion is second. I don't think we need any discussion on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
N11, to change the start time of the June 25th, 2024 regular town council meeting from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Second.
Motion is second.
We usually change the time to 6:00 PM if it works for the council, and you'll be talking to myself, and also Maureen usually comes in at that time.
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
N12, to cancel the May 28th, 2024 regular town council meeting.
Second.
Motion is second. Kathy?
Just wanna kind of make one comment about some of this cancellation, because I, we, as many of you guys know how we do things here in Farmington, is that we're committee-based, and the second town council meeting of the month is typically if we have a workshop or a topic. But when we set up our goals, we set up all our different goals, and then we work on those committees. And so many times, we don't need the second town council meeting, because, for instance, the legal service committee, we, we base it on that. We have our 1928 committee that we're working on, the high school committee. When we set up, we're gonna be looking up in the next three months about some, going through some of the goals, and there'll probably be another committee that's set up. So I just wanted to make that clear to, like, members of the public. It's not that weird that we don't have work that we're doing. We're actually, as you guys all know, very, very busy, but just how we set up our system, a lot of times, we don't need the second town council meeting, because historically, it's really just set up for a workshop to discuss topics. But we now do much of that in ad hoc committees and different things like that.
Excellent. Thank you for the explanation. Any questions?
Yeah, I would, I would just take a different approach to that. I, I think it's important to have meetings, I think especially, and I understand the difference between the meetings, but I do think, you know, you know, when you do have a calendar and you have these meetings on the calendar, I think it's important to those, you know, the citizens, the citizens of Farmington have elected, you know, these officials to come in and be at these meetings. I could see having an agenda where we take some of the committee work that, I think Kathy's accurate, there's a lot of subcommittees and that work gets done. But I think it, I think it's a meeting like the 28th that could actually, I think, be a productive meeting to maybe even dwell a little, little further into the committee work that we do. You know what I mean? So I think, I think it's an opportunity, I think there's also an opportunity, we had a request for a proclamation here tonight. You know, I think that proclamation is for gun violence awareness. It starts on June 1st. If we, if we do cancel the next meeting and we, you know, convene in, in June, the first June meeting, you know, the, the month of June is already a third done before that proclamation is like actually granted. So, so I think, I think it's important, I'm, for me, that, that we would not cancel this meeting.
Anybody else?
I, I agree with Dave, our rules of procedure do specifically call out two meetings a month and do identify public comment in both meetings. So I think it's important to make sure the public also, I mean, even if the meetings are short, to make sure that the public has an opportunity to.
Then, then I would think that potentially, we should look at the meeting schedule, because again, doing another agenda, getting another topics, doing that with the staff work that's going on right now would be burdensome.
Okay.
And so I think if, you know, I think we should have that dialogue, and if, you know, typically in the past, we, we've canceled most of the second town council meetings, and just making up to have a public comment and us doing agendas, us doing minutes, us coming up with topics to talk about, we, I mean, we'd be more than happy to do that, obviously, if that's the thing. But I think the other thing is to look at the calendar and say how many meetings that we actually have, a second town council meeting that we do.
We've already canceled one already in the past, so.
We typically added a, probably out of 12 months out of the year, we probably have three second town council meetings of the, of the year.
Really?
Yeah.
Do we, and at the times where we have canceled this historically, are we getting, like, you know, a lot of reception from the public that they're upset that they have missed the opportunity to come speak with us? Are we getting a lot of negative feedback based on that?
No. No, I, I see both points. I mean, we are canceling them, but again, we, the way that we're set up is, we'd have to look at, you know, what topics we're talking about, what's our goals and objectives, changing, looking at that, too. Because really, right now, I think the priority is, and what we're working on into this, the next couple of months, is to open up a brand-new high school, and that's where everyone's flat-out doing that. And putting other things on the agenda at that point in time, I honestly don't think is a good use of any of our, our time at this point in time. It's a huge undertaking to get this high school project up, running, and out with, between all of us. It's, I mean, to me, I would think that would be our first priority.
And I would just like to echo that. I mean, being on the building committee for the high school, it's two meetings a month off at a time, and I know that it's, takes a lot of cats' time. And in addition to that, there's subcommittees to that committee that have to meet, and so I, I tend to think, I mean, that's all public, the public can come to that, we have the 1928 building meeting.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not, not available.
Yeah, I mean, our 1928 building committee has four ad hoc committees that go on to that, so the people that are on those committees, and it's you all that are going to those meetings that are doing that. So again, it's always been more about a capacity level, but I do get that if it's listed, but I could do a little bit of research to show how often we don't have the meetings. Like, I envision in some ways that, like, if we do our sidewalk thing, I see that as a second, second meeting that we'd have, because we have, before we set up our ad hoc meeting, we'd sit around the table and say, what are we doing with sidewalks as a group? And having that to, because it's part of our goals, part of our objectives, and that's where I would see that.
I mean, I appreciate the comments. I definitely appreciate the fact that it's a busy calendar. You're trying to, you're trying to get a major building open. I've done, in my career, I've done many major building open. I get it. So I get the amount of time that that takes, right? And I'm not trying to diminish that effort. I think that's certainly the way you explained it about the focus on that. I think then what our responsibility needs to be is that we all knew the high school was gonna open this August. So when we set a town council calendar earlier in the year, I think we have to be realistic and then just tell the public that we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna have one, you know. I think it behooves us to then be a lot clearer on how we set up our meetings and how we set up our meeting calendar. That's all.
Yeah, no, I, I think that makes sense.
I wasn't aware we were canceling the May 28th meeting until Devin sent me the meeting agenda. I wasn't aware that we were canceling the May 28th meeting. I don't know, was anybody else aware?
No, but I wasn't, but I wasn't aware of what would it be on the May 28th meeting either. So I, my, you know, I, I think that your heart is in the right place, and I totally, I get it, but I think a lot of organizations can get themselves sort of muddied by having meetings just for the sake of having meetings. If there are areas that need to be addressed, I think it's very important that we meet. And if there are not, then I think that, you know, again, to Sarah's point, you know, Patty was at Board of Ed last night, you were at TPZ two weeks ago, you were at EDC yesterday, you were at the library earlier today. Joe was at a meeting an hour before this meeting started. Our members are in the community. The town council can be touched and felt and spoken to. If we had an outcry of public comment, I would be much, much more sympathetic, but if there is not, you know, I, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna be some clandestine group that doesn't meet. So if there's a necessary reason to meet, then I'm all for it. And if there's not, then I think I would put the resources somewhere.
Well, one of the things, too, is that honestly, is typically, and again, we can change it, is that typically, it's much easier as a, this body to cancel meetings than it is to set meetings, because you have, you have meeting agenda notices, when they have to go, are they special meetings?